Okay, this meeting is going to come to order. Uh, we're meeting downstairs at the uh lower level of the uh Dyton Town Hall. It's seven o'clock. This is the uh meeting of the uh zoning Board of Appeals. Can everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Flags over here in the corner.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight is gonna be pretty simple. We have uh an old business that we're going to attend to that was a meeting held from last month, which was the the Shoplot Road case. Then we're gonna hear two cases from this month, uh the variance and the special permit, uh both for uh for Main Street. The um and I'll explain those cases as as we go along. Uh so the first thing that we're gonna hear is uh to review act. I mean discuss an act on case number zero one dash seventeen, which is thirty-one forty-seven Shoplot Road. The three members, uh voting members were uh Ken Pacheco, Bob Adams.
And Greg Logan.
And Greg Logan. Uh gentlemen, I'm gonna open that case. Was there any discussion that you guys have on that?
No.
I don't agree.
Um, I I uh read the minutes from it and I also saw the um the tape from it. And uh I wanna thank Bob for for filling out uh uh in for me for that night. And uh is there's no discussion? Um, how do you guys wanna proceed?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor to approve. Is there a second? Here we know second, there the motion is denied.
The reason why I'm opposed to it, there was no hardship.
There was no hardship. Okay. Bob?
Actually failed to produce any hardship. Is there was no uh hardship on the land, the fog or the soil.
Okay.
There was no hardship there.
Yeah, Greg?
Same thing, the hardship wasn't there. They were making a non-conforming lot out of this house that is conforming. Usually we don't do that the other way around.
Right. Uh who who is the people that involved in that case? Okay. Uh what happens is you you can't take a conforming lot and 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 create a non-conforming lot. Uh second thing is finance is is not a hardship. The hardship has to be on the land and.
I wasn't here for it.
Oh.
I think he's in a butter.
Oh, in a butter. Oh, I'm sorry.
He was in a butter.
Is who is.
Is anybody here representing the petitioner on this case?
I didn't see.
I represented the petition. I'm not here for that particular case tonight, but.
Oh, okay. Um, okay, kind of with the details of it. Um Roz, you have um. Ken Pacheco making the motion to approve and it was not seconded, so the motion does not pass. There there was no discussion on it. Um so the motion is denied. Uh all three gentlemen said there were no hardships on the land, uh as uh from the tape that I saw, the um. The petitioner tried to make the uh argument that the argument that the uh um hardship was financial reasons. Uh to to split the the lot so that he could have the finances to put the road in, which is not a uh a reason to uh create a non-conforming lot. So that that does not pass. So now we're going to hear new business. And who is here to uh talk about eight forty-three Main Street? Yours, sir? Anybody else?
Yep. I'm the owner.
Yeah, I remember you guys from last time. How are you?
I'm the one, I'm the one next door.
You're the one next door.
I was hearing them both at the same time, I said.
Uh.
Yeah, it's.
Uh no, we're gonna hear them separate, but we are what we are gonna hear first is the variance and then the special permit. The reason why we're gonna hear the variance first because if the variance doesn't pass, it means we need to hear the special permit. Uh I know when I spoke with the building inspector, uh the I s- it's I spoke with him about a month ago, there was um.
Okay.
A little bit of a discussion as to, one, you probably should have applied for this when you actually ap- uh did the. Uh ap- applied for the special permit. I mean, uh variance when you did the um variance on the lot, it would have been a little bit cheaper.
Right. Right.
So uh uh Ken Pacheco is going to read the uh notice as it was printed in the newspaper.
We had. We had a spec.
And then uh.
For a re- re- name of spec.
I didn't, at the beginning of the project, the end, uh.
And then uh.
Bob Adams, Jason Quinn, and Ken Pacheco.
I'm gonna read the petition. Uh notice of public hearing, town of Dyton, Massachusetts, zoning Board of Appeals. Notice is hereby given that the Dyton Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, March fifteenth, twenty seventeen, at seven P M at the Dyton Town Hall, nine seventy, seventy-nine Somerset Avenue, Dyton, Mass. Zero two seven one five, and the application of Carl Rabello for property located at eight forty-three Main Street, Dyton, Mass. Zero two seven one five, short on assesses map nineteen, lot number twenty dash two, for a variance pursuant to section four, forty-six thirty-one B of the town of Dyton zoning bylaws. And or in order to allow the installation of a small scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic system on a possible land without adequate furniture. Case number is zero two dash seventeen, Dyton Zoning Board of Appeals, Roslyn Grassi, Secretary of Court. Uh all interested parties should attend the hearing. Copy of this application petition appeal is available for review at the office of the town clerk, assessors, bill, building inspectors, sewer commissioners, fire department, highway department have been notified. And um the members of the zoning board have been notified.
Um like I said, I I there was a question of um how you should have maybe gone about this um several months ago. At least we were able to save you a little bit of money the way it was done. Uh how it's going to proceed is um you'll identify yourself, you'll identi- identify yourself. Uh you'll present your case and um once you're done presenting it, the members will go in order from left to right, will ask any questions. Uh once the the questions are done, we'll open up to direct the abutters, and then any abutters that are here, uh I mean anybody else in the in the room. Uh and then um they'll come back to us here at the table. And um then we'll open up the special permit. The special permit is um is just a formality, but um it still has to be heard. Uh so sir, uh you just identify yourself.
Yes. Uh good evening, my name is Jeff Dolman from SciTech Engineering, uh representing Carl Rabello for the uh proposed application as before tonight for the. Installation of a freestanding uh solar panel uh system at eight, sorry, eight forty-three, here we go. Eight forty-three uh Main Street in Dyton, Mass. Um now it's my understanding that the the actual project manager on this case couldn't be at the hearing tonight, but he's been in contact Jemag- uh Jemagia. And um based on the zoning regulations here in Dyton, uh because the lot is a non-conforming lot due to frontage that a variance is required. Uh to install the this particular system on the lot, uh which ordinarily on a conforming lot just need a special permit. But the fact that the the lot itself um is non-conforming in nature due to the lack of frontage, um that a a variance is required. Because the way the regulation is written, it says, um I don't have this specific regulation with me, but it it is worded that um it is allowed by special permit on uh standard lots. And since this is a substandard lot, um the variance is required for the installation. Other than that, I I'd be happy to answer any questions that the uh the board might have.
Okay, uh you're you're correct. Uh uh we're gonna handle the special permit as a as a separate case.
Yes, yes.
And um is it a year ago or two years ago that we met with the two of you to let?
Uh in between a year, year and a half ago.
A year and a year and a half ago. And um I'm gonna start from left to right again, like I said. Uh Greg, do you have any questions about this variance? Um just to let you know, I mean ma- make it just as clear as he said. Uh the the reason why they're here is because the lot itself is insufficient frontage. If if it was a normal lot size lot, uh they wouldn't be here for a variance at all. It would be just a special permit. But we issued a variance, uh like I said, about a year and a half ago, to allow uh two lots instead of the four that was uh originally going to be built on that uh lot.
I only have a couple of questions about the uh actual, it's thirty-one feet, is it thirty-one feet wide? Is it thirty-one inside the orange red piece you've written on?
Yeah, well, that's the um that's the radius of the.
So it's a thirty-one degree?
Yeah, thirty-one foot diameter around the the panel.
How tall is it off the ground?
Um I, just to kind of give you an indication. I don't have specific measurements, I'm sorry. Do you have some photos of what the system? When it when it's when it's fully vertical, it's uh uh twenty one.
Oh, so this moves?
Yeah, twenty-two feet. It fol- it follows the sun, it's it tilts, and then at night it lays flat.
Yes. Now, this this particular system is only gonna make power revenue for the home, or you're gonna be sending it back to the national grid?
I have a. Um, I think it's gonna produce some extra, but my whole house is electric, so my last month's electric bill was over six hundred.
It's not, it's not.
So it gives you an idea, no. So it gives you an idea, it's, the reason why I'm going for two, cause one wouldn't be enough to power the house. My break even point is a fifteen K system, and I think this is borderline fif- in between fifteen and sixteen K.
Okay.
There's uh forty, forty-eight panels total.
And this is on uh zonal tube structures?
Uh no, I have to put a a five foot wide by six foot deep footing.
Okay.
Two, two of them, one.
This one just has a zonal tube, just making sure you're up, what do you need?
Yeah, absolutely. Yep.
We'll give everyone else. Shows you fifteen feet off the uh.
Boundary line.
Off the boundary line, and that's.
Oh, yeah.
Do you have the abutter or not?
The boundary there. He's been wondering if I can touch it.
Yeah. If if I would have known that we would have to get um to go through a variance process because of it, the I I didn't know because it's a non-conforming lot that. It this would be this kind of issue. I thought.
We would be with anything you do on that.
Absolutely, I I was unaware of like how it works, really, you know? So I think that's why at the beginning, uh I'm not sure if it was my engineer or or the building inspector said, I mentioned the word barn before. And you then he explained, well, now would be a good time to put it on the plan so you can get everything approved at once. I didn't understand why, you know, and this is kind of explained to me.
I walked it on my roof, but uh they they talked me out of it. My roof has hips and valleys and it's a mess. They said that they would, I wouldn't produce much at all because there'd be panels all over the place, so they they advised me to go to the ground.
I supported the variance the last time. I'm in favor of the variance now. We'd like to hear from the abutters because there were certain promises made the last time, I just wanted to make sure the abutters are satisfied with what's happened so far that I'm on property, but I'm in favor of it, favor of the uh.
Mm-hmm.
Solar panels, too.
Just uh quickly, how far off the street is it, the panels?
Yeah. Uh I would say approximately uh s- about seven hundred feet.
And and that um. Seven hundred feet, so there's no um reason to obstruct the view of these from uh from.
And any any of my my three neighbors on the right hand side, if you're in their backyard, my house actually obstructs the the view of the panels.
Okay, um I'm gonna assume maybe some of your neighbors are here, so um before we close the case, we'll hear from the abutters.
Yeah.
And um they might, we might um have to uh put some conditions on that before we um uh approve it. Um I'm I'm in favor of anything that gets you off the grid.
Mm-hmm.
So uh if it's gonna help uh save some money and um go green. My only concern uh would be, again, if 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 it's uh affects the neighbors in any way. The um. The Jim Agiar ha- has it right. Unfortunately, you're always gonna be bothered with the fact that this house, these houses were built. With uh um a a variance. So anytime you wanna do a shed that's bigger than a ten by ten. Uh or any uh accessory structure, you're always gonna have to come back before the board.
Mm.
Uh that's the luck of the draw.
For that, for that first day.
Uh I'll.
Actually, I got a question, will you? How about in-ground pool, if you have a?
Uh that's on an accessory structure, so that you'd be all right with.
Oh, okay. Alright.
Uh but if you put a pool house.
Yeah.
Or an enclosed filter, uh that is bigger than a ten by ten, you'd have to come back before.
Okay.
Uh Zach, do you have any questions?
No, I mean just the abutters concerned clearly, I'm concerned about.
Uh.
Uh the only thing that I had was um. Where in location is your septic and leaching fields and all that good stuff, too? Is it the front of the house, the front of the house? Okay, so that's fine.
Front of the house, it's in the front, yes.
And no other wetlands back there? I see the brook is back there, but no other wetlands. You're you're outside of the hundred foot buffer zone, so.
No. Mm-hmm.
I have no problem with that then either. No other questions, everything else was was asked already.
Okay. Uh we're gonna open up the, are any of you abutters here for this, these two houses? Yes, sir, we'll hear from you first. Can you just state your names so that um the secretary can record it?
George Washburn.
Sure, George Washburn?
Yep.
That's okay.
Eight three three Main Street.
Yes, sir.
I'm all for it, let them do it, won't bother me at all.
Okay, great. Alright, so you're in favor of it, obviously. Alright, thank you. Yes, sir.
Yep.
Ken Rodriguez.
Yep.
Eight six seven Main Street. Um as long as I'm not looking at them, I'm perfectly alright with it, because honestly.
And I I'm assuming you're not looking at them because you're forward of this, these, right?
I have no problem with panels, and it looks like from the plans that it's going to be the other side, backside of the house.
Yep.
And that's fine.
Okay. Is there anybody else that wants to be heard? Yes?
I'm Sally Borges, eight sixty Main Street, and I'm just in agree with Ken um that we were just having a discussion as to where on proximity from our view.
Sure.
The panels were going to be, so um so I'm assuming it's gonna be in the back of the two houses.
Okay. Did you wanna see this picture? It's probably.
I, yeah, I kinda saw it from there.
Oh, you already saw it? Okay, so you'd get a better idea of where they're gonna be. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Now, they've already agreed they'd put the arborvitae's in, granted they're only this big now.
Right.
Um can we request that the arborvitae's also block road access view?
Road access view.
Because it's gonna be between the two houses, you'll be able to see it. I know that's been a big thing around here lately as far as people not wanting to look at solar panels. So it's just a question, if they can throw some arborvitae's in front of it between the houses to.
You're saying from Main Street?
Block it from Main Street, yeah. So that would be your view, like.
Well, okay. We do actually. We we have a row of arborvitae's.
Yeah, yeah.
As long as you got the.
The wall, the stone walls.
Yeah. Arborvitae's, yeah. They, you know.
Okay.
They say about five years, they should be twenty feet tall, they're the green giants, they grow.
Arborvitae's double every five years, so um.
Yeah. Yeah.
Whatever you pl- yeah, five years from now, they'll double whatever they, whatever size you put them in at.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um. Ken, are you comfortable, I know you, uh you know that area that that I do, that they're they're not gonna be seen from the road?
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm not too far from, yeah, well, I'm not concerned if they can, personally, I'm not concerned if they can be seen from the road.
I'm not opposed to it, I know where.
Okay. Um, I'm going to um ask the three of you.
Like any abutters? Do they want?
Uh, yeah, uh are there any more abutters that need to be heard? Okay. Uh gentleman from the board, is there anybody else that has uh any questions? Um.
I'm gonna make a motion.
Uh I'm just gonna ask you, uh Ken, if um you wanna make a motion now.
Wanna make a motion to approve the variance?
I'll second.
Okay. Jason, uh you're also a voting member?
Yes.
Uh do you have uh any discussion of that?
Nope, no, I'm good.
Okay, the three voting members, uh Roz, the uh there's been a motion uh to approve, this been seconded, and all three members are uh. Voted yes?
Yep.
So it is approved?
Yes, yes, and a yes, yeah.
In favor?
Yep, in favor.
And gentlemen, what's your reasons for being in favor of it so that when the decision is written?
We've already approved the first variance, and I understand, and what's the size of the lots, I forget.
Four acres.
Four acres.
Four acres, it's a good sized uh, good sized lot. They'll be coming back uh before us probably again for other reasons, but they got the variance the first time around, as long as they're not doing anything outrageous.
Mm-hmm.
Right. They're not gonna be seen from the road, and um they're pretty much already blocked with arborvitae's, okay.
Yeah.
Um then we're going to hear uh case number zero three seventeen. Oh, uh I'm gonna actually uh make a motion to close the public input on case number zero two seventeen.
And two three seventeen.
Uh no, zero two seventeen, we're gonna close public input, I need a second on that, please.
We want us the the board members to make that motion, Mark.
Yes, if one of you will please.
Okay, I wanna make a motion to be closed, the public hearing on the uh zero two seventeen.
I'll second.
Okay. Uh one of you second?
I'm in discussion.
Uh.
Jason seconded it, okay. Uh the three of you all in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Roz, you got that?
Yep.
Okay.
Ken, my next question is, uh Peter.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna point the same people.
Same three members, yeah.
Same three members for the uh.
Special permit.
Special permit.
So I'm gonna read the notice.
Yep. Gentlemen, we're just gonna do the special permit as a formality, so you don't even have to present it, okay?
Do you want me to give a reason why we needed on the approval?
Uh yeah, he's gonna read the um.
No, not on this, but on the other one, on the variance.
Oh, yeah, I.
It's it is allowed by special permit, right?
Yeah.
And uh the the variance, and it does show here that uh there will be uh. One hundred and eighty feet on the back boundaries, it'll be of n- you know, no obstruction to any of the uh any abutters. And it is allowed by special permit.
Um are you, you've referring to the special permit, Bob, or you?
On the variance, we just wrote that.
Both the variance, variance, okay. And and.
Variance, we just wrote that.
Just as a reason for approval.
Yep. And uh what'd you say, seven hundred feet from the road?
Yep.
Okay. Can you write that down too, Roz? Roz, that it's seven hundred feet from the road?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Bob, it's the same three members, you said?
Yep.
Okay.
Like the the corner of the house is five or six feet.
Uh Ken, can you read the um?
I will read the notice similar to the one that I just read.
Uh.
Notice of public hearing, town of Dyton, Mass, uh Zoning Board of Appeals. Notice is hereby given that the Dyton Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a hea- uh public hearing on Wednesday, March fifteenth, twenty seventeen, at seven P M at the Dyton Town Hall, Low Level. Nine seventy-nine Somerset Avenue, Dyton, Mass, zero two seven one five, on the application of Carl Rabello. For a property located at eight forty-three Main Street, short on assesses map nineteen, lot number twenty-two dash two, for a special permit to allow the installation of a small scale ground mounted. Photovoltaic.
What is it?
Photovoltaic.
Exactly.
You're welcome.
Uh solar array. pursuant to section forty-six hundred, fifty-three hundred, fifty-four hundred of the to- town Dyton Zoning Board of Appeals. Case number zero three dash seventeen, Dyton Zoning Board of Appeals, Roslyn Grassi, Secretary of Court. Uh assessors, uh building inspectors, sewer commission, fire department, highway department have been notified, as well as the attorney and the water department, and all the members on this board here.
Okay, th- uh this is involves a special permit for this case, uh s- um this s- um is allowed by a special permit unless there's a reason not to. Uh given the fact that we've approved the variance, uh the uh say voting members were Bob Adams, Jason Quinn, and uh Ken Pacheco. Gentlemen, um I'm gonna open it up to the board. Is there any questions as to why that uh you would not approve the special permit?
I would, again, I'd like to just hear from the abutters, make sure that they're in.
Yeah.
Okay, well, other than that, I'm in I'm in favor of it.
Uh going down the board from left to right?
Same thing, they're all.
Same thing?
Gentlemen, any questions?
Same, same thing, uh I'll.
Yeah. Okay, are there any abutters that want to be heard to the special permit? Okay, uh hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public.
Yep.
Public hearing.
I'll second.
Here we know abutters, Ken Pacheco has closed the public hearing. Um who seconded it?
Bob seconded it.
Okay.
So Bob Adams seconded it? Okay, so the public input is closed. Um s- make the motion to approve, somebody?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit, this uh zero three dash seventeen.
I'll second.
No one in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No one is opposed, so the special permit is approved. So you're all set?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh yours is not gonna get approved, so.
It's borrowed. That's a big difference.
We are going to uh have you present the case for the uh the variance because the numbers change, so um not to. Woe you with it, but um it's the feet uh distance are gonna be uh off.
That's okay, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Same.
Yes, sir.
No, Ken hasn't. Sir, I'm gonna ask you to um give your name again for the uh the record.
Sure. Good evening, my name is Jeff Dolman, SciTech Engineering, representing Jeffrey Vicente, the applicant uh for this particular uh variance request. Um specifics in this case are the same as what we had previously. Uh the applicant's proposing to install a freestanding uh solar panel system. Um on a lot that is substandard um in terms of frontage. Um. The, other than that, the 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 panels in this particular case are a little bit further, um a little closer to the road than on the previous case.
You just.
Um reason being, there are some wetland resource areas uh located on the property in the rear. Um so in order to uh maintain the same approximate distance from the wetland line as what we had previously. The panels are uh approximately fifteen, twenty feet closer to the road than on the previous case. Other than that, the the specifics are the same um as previously mentioned.
Okay, um we're just gonna do a formality. Uh Ken's gonna read the uh.
Yeah.
Um so.
This is four, it's.
Yeah.
Uh three for the uh, is the variance, or is it?
Yeah.
That's the uh, Roz, is the uh special permit, so the variance first.
Oh, four.
Should be oh three first, right? Oh two?
No, oh three was a special permit for cars, oh four is uh.
Four, four, seventeen, oh five, seventeen.
Okay, okay, I got it. You gave me oh four, I had a question. Oh, okay.
Here's a similar to what I uh read before, notice of public hearing, town of Dyton, Massachusetts, Zoning Board of Appeals, this was in the newspaper. Notice is hereby given that Dyton Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, March fifteenth, twenty seventeen, at seven P M. At the Dyton Town Hall, nine seventy-nine Somerset Avenue, Dyton, Mass, zero two seven one five, on the application of Jeffrey Vicente. For property located at eight fifty-seven Main Street, Dyton, Mass, zero two seven one five, short on assesses map nineteen lot twenty-one dash one, for a variance pursuant to section forty-six thirty-one B of the town of Dyton Zoning Board of Appeals. Zoning bylaws in order to allow the installation of a small scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic.
Voltaic.
Thank you. Uh system on a possible land without adequate furniture. Uh Dyton Zoning Board of Appeals, Roslyn Grassi, uh Secretary of Court. All parties interested uh should attend the hearing. A copy of this application petition appeal is available for review at the office of the town clerk. Assessors, building inspectors, sewer commission, fire department, highway department, our town attorney, and water department have been notified, as well as the members of this board.
Bob, it's the same three members, Bob Adams, Jason Quinn, and Ken Pacheco.
Yep.
And and so you already presented your case. Uh this is for the variance, and um starting from left to right. Greg, did you have any questions?
No, everything seems to be in order.
Um, Mark?
These are all bound mounted the same way, same same.
Yes.
Same system.
I just have a question because I was talking to Peter when you were speaking, I'm just apologize for that, but how far away is it from the wetlands?
That's that's the same thing.
Um it's about a hundred and fifty feet roughly, um but it is, we have gone through conservation, we have order conditions, uh uh actually on both lots. Because they are located within a two hundred foot riparian zone of a uh perennial stream.
Okay.
So.
I'm gonna listen to the abutters, but I'm not satisfied. Do you have any questions, Zach?
Yeah.
No, I'm just, this is new abutters I want to hear.
Okay, Jason, do you have any questions?
Nope, I'm satisfied.
Are there any abutters that wish to be heard on this case?
Nope.
Okay.
Thought I didn't know that the other one was here, that's why.
Okay. I'm gonna make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the uh variance.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, here we know uh opposite position, Roz, with the names.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, s- uh s- I'm going to assume your approval didn't get for the same reasons?
Yes.
Yes.
Correct.
So Roz, you can just copy the re- same reasons that uh you have from the first case?
Okay.
So when you give it to Marguerite, you can uh spell it out in the minutes.
We have to make it a formal motion to approve the special permit.
Uh no, we're gonna do, we need the special permit, yeah, Bob.
So it's the same uh voting members, I'm gonna read the uh.
Yeah, open up the case with special.
It's not gonna need your help. Uh notice of public hearing, town of Dyton, Massachusetts, Zoning Board of Appeals. Notice is hereby given that the Zoning uh Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, March fifteenth, twenty seventeen, at seven P M. At the Dyton Town Hall, Low Level, nine seventy-nine Somerset Avenue, Dyton, Mass, zero two seven one five, on the application of Jeffrey Vicente. For a property located at uh eight fifty-seven Main Street, short on assesses map nineteen, lot number twenty-two dash one. For a special permit to allow the installation of a small scale ground mounted photovoltaic.
Voltaic.
Voltaic, uh thank you. Solar array, pursuant to sections forty-six hundred, fifty-three hundred, fifty-four hundred of the town Dyton zoning uh bylaws. Case number is zero five dash seventeen, Dyton Zoning Board of Appeals, Roslyn Grassi, Secretary of Court.
There we go. Right.
Yeah, all interested persons shall attend the hearing. Copy of this application petition appeal is av- available for review at the office of the town clerk. The assessors, building inspectors, sewer commission, fire department, highway department, uh town attorney, and water department have been notified, as well as the members of this board here, so.
I only have one question.
Yep.
What does photovoltaic, what does voltaic mean?
I don't know what it means.
I just wanted to put the notice, know that I could say it.
Solar panels.
I would imagine it means it stands, it stands up.
Yeah.
The vaulted self.
Voltaic, I think it it rotates, follows the sun. So they're just not, they're just not, they just don't stay in position.
Okay, shaking your head.
Photovoltaic, basically, it converts the energy from the sun into a voltage using a chemical process in the panels.
That is awesome.
Just.
True story. It's nothing to do with turning and looking, it has to do with the conversion. It's nothing to do with turning and looking, it has to do with the conversion, just like photosynthesis from plants, this is photovoltaic.
Photosynthesis.
Okay.
It converts to electricity.
Okay, everybody just loves saying that word.
I just, I just wanted you to know that I could say it too, I thought, but, uh, are there any questions from the board?
I have no questions, uh.
Any questions from, any of the abutis or any else?
Okay.
I actually, I'm also, might ask a question now or after you close it out?
Um, go ahead.
I, the only question I have is, um, uh, based on the, 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 the time period that, uh, we're trying to get this work done. Um, and to be locked into the, uh, uh, tax credits and other stuff from two thousand sixteen, we're on a, we have, we have to install this system, two thousand sev- we have a hundred and twenty days into this year. Um, and, um, based on the approval system and you guys sign, is, is there any possible way of expedi- expediting the sign offs on, on this?
Into, what's your timeframe? What's the last day that you need it?
It needs to be installed and approved by National Grid by the end of April. It's, this is the, this is the.
I doubt it.
Because getting the sign off, uh, when I talked to the building inspector, he said, uh.
Installed by then?
Installed, which the ins- installation part, it's, I'm, I'm a contractor, I'm pretty much doing it myself, but just getting the board to sign off on it.
Okay.
And he'll, I guess, issue some sort of, uh.
Twenty day waiting period.
Yeah, he, yeah, but he, but he can give you.
Well, he can, he can, he can allow me to.
He can allow you to, at risk, if somebody later on sues when that twenty day, uh.
Yeah, my own risk. Correct. So it's just.
But it, that's something you run by the building commissioner, yeah, in his own.
I did, and, and he, he, he had just said that, uh, if, if I, uh, again, i- if, if I could ask, uh, in any way, if we can expedite that signature.
It's.
Uh, you need decisions, uh, written out.
See, it's, it's not, um, it's getting the decision written by our attorney that slows the process.
Like.
Um, so you need it by April thirtieth, uh, but you're installing it, so, um. Yes. We can get the decision by then. Um.
But you need to have it installed.
Yeah.
How many days is National Grid?
But you're gonna install.
It gave us one twenty days from January first.
National Grid?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, here's what Ken was, uh, alluding to. We can get the attorney to write the decision, and, uh, Jason and, uh, Ken and Bob can sign it by, um. By the nineteenth of April, and then there's an appeal period, um, because it would be posted on the twentieth. But, um, what, what he is saying is, there's a twenty day appeal period that, um. You, you can run the risk of somebody appealing it, nobody, nobody's going to appeal it.
Yeah.
Um, and, and that's the, the risk that you would run with the building inspector.
Mm-hmm.
Now, um, you can start doing it now, uh, and, and run the risk of a neighbor complaining that you don't have the proper permitting and, or, or even the building inspector. But that's something, we can all have a conversation with him, and saying that we've got it on the fast track with the attorney.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
And it's just, you're gonna run the risk of.
Yeah.
Somebody issuing a cease and desist on you.
Yeah.
Um, which.
Which is the least my concern.
If that's the least of your concern, um, that you gotta balance it yourself.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, we can ask the attorney for a favor, and, and, and the three gentlemen can come in and sign it as soon as she writes it, but I don't know her schedule. Uh, she might say, I'm on vacation, she works for the city of Tonkin in the school department.
Mm-hmm.
And I know she's in, um, negotiations right now with the union, so she's working.
Yeah.
A lot of hours, I just spoke with her the other day, so, um, that, that's why, um, i- it, it's, it's, it's four different cases. But they're identical.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I'm glad the gentlemen are approving them tonight, because normally they would put it on hold and, and approve it next month. Um, but I would think that, that if, if we asked her, she would, uh, probably shave a couple of weeks off the, the writing process.
Yeah.
So, I'm, I'm thinking, uh, we'd get it at the beginning of April, the three gentlemen, uh, with the exception of Jason, these two gentlemen don't work. Uh, basically. No, they're retired.
Half of them retired.
Uh.
Is there someone specific I could reach out to, like, and, like?
You, you can't, I, I would call our attorney, but you can't, uh, do that, and, um, it, it would just be a matter of Jason. Coming down on, uh, when the town hall, town, uh, the, the, um, were, were open here at the town hall, that he, that he could come down and sign it.
Okay.
Uh, and, and Roz would call you when, when that, that is done.
Okay.
So we're gonna ask our attorney to expedite this as quickly as possible, so they wanna see to get the, uh, benefits. This case is over, you have a vote on it.
Right. Uh. We gotta finish this, uh.
Yes.
Yeah.
I thought you were objected to him getting solar, right?
No, yeah, yeah.
I could imagine.
Uh, uh, we're in the process.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna make close the public.
I can, I can see it from there.
Okay, we're gonna, uh, the motion is on the floor, so then somebody second that emotion, uh.
Motion.
That motion, please.
I made a motion to, uh, close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no opposed.
So, uh, now I need a, uh, motion to, um, approve the special permit.
I'll make the motion to approve the special permit.
Seconded?
Seconded.
There ain't no discussion, it's passed?
I agree.
Aye.
Aye.
Passed.
Alright gentlemen, you're all set, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll let, uh, Roz will let you know.
Yeah.
As soon as this is done.
Good luck with the photovoltaic.
Photovoltaic. I know what it means.
We're gonna have a blast.
Love, yes.
Really?
So you can, you can.
That's me, hi, Zach, nice to meet you.
Just the first case, she, one is the, uh, variance and one is, one is the, uh, special permit. I don't have the second, yeah, she has the second, so we didn't take anything out of it that she's had, right? You, you have the other one? The second case?
Four or five, yes.
Okay.
Do you need it?
No, no, just wanna make sure I can tell.
Nope, no, forget it, good.
I know, right, eleven and three, they're playing the night, so you should be good game, they're playing caliber.
Just a federal, what can I do for you?
Um, I just wanna give you a brief update on Stonegate.
Okay, before you do that, is everything paid?
Zero.
Zero is paid, or is you owe zero? All your fees are paid here too?
Yeah, me today.
Okay, excellent. Woo!
Well, but you still.
Oh, I have.
But the taxes.
Take care of it first.
Okay.
Um. Yeah, I understand your taxes are all paid, somebody told me, which is outstanding, thank you very much.
Right through May first.
So I mentioned at the.
No outstanding.
Yeah.
What?
Today, no outstanding.
Yeah.
So I mentioned at the, uh.
So we have to get the works before May first.
Yes, well, I asked you at the last meeting to, uh.
Thank you very much.
Make sure, just to get, uh, them up to date, I know you read the manages, uh, but I've asked you to, uh, make sure your taxes are current.
Yep.
That's for me to.
I wanted a letter from the, uh, sewer department saying that they're okay with the E V one versus the, uh. What is it called?
Uh, environmental one versus gravity solar.
Uh, right, the, but it's a special, uh, pump station, yes, that's.
Pumping station. And what'd they say?
Excuse me?
What'd they say?
We're meeting Monday night.
Okay.
We were gonna meet last night, and the snow, I was hoping to see them before it even came in. It's just informally, I just, I hope to come in, we met last night and we're on track and, and go. But because of the storm, they didn't hold their meeting, so we're meeting, um, next Monday at five o'clock, okay, and so, um. And I can just tell you, the sewer department is concerned more that if, I'm saying that I don't wanna build phase two. That their concern would be if someone comes down the road and wanted to do it, and, and I s- discuss with them that, that we, we would never apply for forty B. And again, okay, and only any future use that land would just be what is allowed by zoning, period, okay, and somehow we clarify that, okay?
Yeah, I think I was, I was there for part of that, that's the, you know, you may outside the sewer department, so we, uh, was talking about that.
Yeah, we were just standing outside, yeah.
And their concern is, is that you're gonna put more houses there at some point, let me just, just finish, and hook it up to this sewer system that would need a pump station.
It. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Right.
Right.
Which is what you're trying to avoid.
Right.
So, uh, they wanted to lock in that land as, for something. You mentioned at the meeting we had, uh, last month, I thought, if anything, it'd be four houses, that, am I correct?
I, I think that would be a good option, but I just, you know, it's forty acres, you know.
Not hooked, and you said twelve acres.
I like, yeah, about a twelve acre lot.
But nothing to do, I mean, the other hand, he could also sell the land and, and who knows what's, uh, right, you could sell the land too, so.
Might make a good solar farm, I don't know, it's right on that high town, but I'm not interested in that myself, I'd be thrilled.
Yeah, you, you, you wanna complete phase one, and you don't want anything necessarily to do with phase two.
Exactly.
It definitely won't be a forty B.
Exactly.
So that's something that we would have to take into consideration, and they want some kind of resolution on that, as to what they're gonna, my understanding is they wanna know what he's gonna do with that land before they start saying anything about E V one or the, uh, pump station.
Right.
It's for some suggestion that the E V ones are better than the pump station, each house would have an E V one, what do they call it?
Environmental one.
But what are they, uh?
Environmental one is a, a single pump that's, goes in the ground, sewage goes there, and it's connected usually by a one inch line to a force main. And they literally pump it up to the top of the hill where the gravity net, at the top, it goes all by gravity, okay?
It's gravity fit, yeah.
We're gonna do phase two, I mean, there were gonna be three times more houses on it, okay, and, um, so now there are six houses. And there you have a concern about the ones that, and it would be adding ten more for a hill of sixteen, and to build a, a pump station that they're gonna have to maintain for eternity, okay? For sixteen houses is.
You know, we do wanna find out what they're saying about the sewer, you know, the things, they're telling us, I can't speak to the whole board, but if they're telling us you need a pump station, I suspect that that's what we're gonna have, that's gonna do, that's part of the.
Yeah, I'm gonna, you know, that's what we're, that's what we're talking. No, I agree. No.
But they may come up with this E V one, which sounds like it's better for the homeowners in that if the pump station goes, everybody's paying for that, if the E V one goes, that homeowner's paying for it, is my understanding.
Right, and that's something I, uh, but I hope they have a, a. Some sort of resolution as early as Monday night.
Right, because we're not gonna, my position is that we should not hear this case until all those issues.
No, I understand. Right.
And you've also agreed that this is a substantial change, and this is so, a bond that everybody else would, you know, needs to be notified.
I have, but I.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
My question is to the board, when we, uh, 'cause this obvious is, to me, is a, is a substantial change. Now, by us, we, uh, eliminating the second or third phase, where's the phase, third phase, whatever phase it is, we're, we're losing, uh, our affordable housing. But we also have something on that property that was issued that would go in perpetuity forever on that, what is it, you said forty-eight acres of the, of the, how do we go about getting that removed?
Forty-eight acres, yeah.
We, we're gonna need legal advice on this.
Right.
To, uh, I think, I don't know about the, how the board feels, but I don't know if we can e- even actually rescind what we've already done, uh, because this is a forty B was given. Particularly, uh, all kinds of, uh, variances and relief from all of the phases. Now we're going ahead into two thirds into the project, or halfway, whatever it is, and we're, we're changing it, this needs to be legally.
Well, I have asked, if we're gonna hear it, and I'm, and sure Peter would have asked it anyway, is that our attorney be present for the, well, he's.
Right, yeah, noth- nothing's gonna go forward without Marguerite's.
But there needs to be money for that.
Being here, and, um, nothing's gonna go forward unless we have a bond. Excuse me again? Nothing is gonna go forward unless we have a bond. On the phase one road? Yes. I have no problem with it. And, um, a phase one completion of, um, bills for Marguerite and Pete Williams. Of course, Pete Williams. Our engineer, because he's gonna be involved.
Was he?
Um.
Was he on this one here? Was he, was Pete Williams the one that was involved in this?
Yes.
Was it one that he wasn't involved?
Oh, maybe not, no, no, that was.
Was one that he wasn't, he's, we can have, we can have people, yes.
He would have been, uh.
He's the one that we know.
Little girl.
Yeah. Um, but.
Everybody else is both.
Judith's niche was the herd, husband's herd, early on, he's the key. So, yeah, I would want a bond for the, the completion of the road, and, um, and to make sure that whatever outstanding bills would be occurred. Of having Marguerite and Pete Williams, who's the engineer, to make sure that they're gonna be, have to get paid. Mm-hmm. Uh, because you're gonna be creating legal bills and engineering bills, um, consultant fees. Right, well, I know the consultant piece, for the engineer part at least, they're covered by forty B, you know, I'm not sure with Marguerite Mitchell's, but. Right. What do you mean covered by forty B? Well, you have the right to ask me, absolutely, yeah, yeah, fifty-three G account, I know. Right.
Yeah, we have a count, we have to put money into it for our turn.
Right, right, um, right, fifty-three G.
Rest of it for the bond.
That's the check I just gave, um. That's to cover outstanding bills from last time. Right.
Marguerite's gonna have to be involved, I don't know, I don't think the burden should fall on the board of the town.
I'm good with that. I am, I'm actually gonna ask, uh, an attorney familiar with this stuff to put some legwork in. The more information, I, good information I can give Marguerite. Right, and the better it is for you. And the lower one I have to pay her, yeah, so I, I think if we do all, a lot of the heavy lifting and then have Marguerite load it, I think it's better for everybody. Right. Absolutely. Um.
So we're gonna need to get a cost to complete from Pete Williams.
Right. Um, right.
That would, that's the bond that we're seeking.
Yeah, the cost to complete, which I talked to them the other night, um, about it, and I think we figured out, what was it, seventy-five thousand for the road? No.
I don't know who you're talking.
It was under, um. Under a hundred, a hundred thousand for the road, 'cause it's just tapping the road and finishing the side, sidewalk. We get some side work to do, we, I don't know if the plan calls from concrete bounds or what. And you gotta cap, cap that wall, because it's gonna collapse if you don't, um. Yeah. Well, it's pretty ugly too. No, it, it's there, I'm not asking you to rebuild it, but you gotta cap it because it's just freezing every time water gets inside there, um. Yeah, um, I have an idea on that, and, um, the, um, what I like to try to do is just form the top of it, okay? And then we can shoot concrete down into the, inside the wall, and then maybe put a couple of, you know, those photovoltaic lights up there. Yep.
Break a ceiling.
I mean, maybe every ten or fifteen feet, but, and they go on, we have a, we have them at the playground over there, they go on at night, they light it up, you know, and to be a, uh, an easy way to get it done, I'm not all for that. Sure. So we're dominating the conversation, what is it that you wanted to come here tonight for? Just come and tell you I'm working on it, that's all, okay, that's all. And we bumped into each other and I, and you weren't here the last time, Peter, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I, I saw that.
And, and just, and just so you know, he's been in contact with Jim Agia, because Jim has said, as we would say, uh, if you're gonna come back to us, we want everything on the team, we want you to. Whatever you're looking for, we wanna know, we don't wanna repeat this in six months or a year from now, we wanna, so, uh, Jim is working with a list of stuff that he should be seeking.
Right. Right. Right.
Variances or whatever, it's gonna be way bigger, I don't, I don't know.
So, we would be, uh, opening this back up to the public, because it's major changes, um, so it would be probably, my guess, um. Two, maybe, uh, at tops, three public hearings, um, but. It's, uh, depends on how good a job I do, okay? Uh, well, if I can cross all the bridges with the neighbors, with this and that. Well, and I'm gonna, we're gonna ask you to, before we have that first public hearing, to have your act together, I mean, we don't wanna waste our time coming in, uh, 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 you know, meeting after meeting. I understand that you wanted to have an August deadline, I think that's gonna be a stretch, uh, I mean, it's, because not only are you talking about notifying the abutis, you're talking about notifying mortgage companies. Well. That, in other words, people. You believe mortgage companies would have to be notified as well? Yes, we already talked about that at a meeting. Yeah, but I never understood that honestly, Mr. Chairman. Yes.
What, what, the, the mortgage?
What, what, does the mortgage?
Because they have liens on the houses.
Right.
So they bought into, they gave mortgages, uh, on these forty B houses.
Right.
Um, uh, with stipulations, and you can't change those stipulations, you know, to people who own these mortgages.
Right.
Uh, and the other thing that Bob said, which is something that this board is going to take a serious look at, is we approve this with a certain percentage in our pockets of affordable homes, and now you're asking to change that percentage.
Well, the percentage, I think, is about the same, it's just we have less affordables and less market worth.
The percentage is the wrong word, the number of affordable houses.
The number.
We're losing.
Right.
A certain amount of, he's not completing that last phase, so we're losing those affordable houses, but you're not gaining the market rate ones.
But my, that is right. So it's a wash.
It's a wash.
It's an affordable number, I'm just saying.
Going past that, going past the issue of us losing the forty, the affordable units that we're doing, the legality of the fact that they were supposed to, as a condition, we were supposed to get this many, now we're not. How does this affect that forty eight acres, they're gonna have to show me, the attorney's gonna have to convince me, that we can get out of this and not have the town be liable for something on this.
I will.
It's, uh, we're losing the, the, we just can't say, okay, we can take, we're taking this away, cause we approved it with this amount and number, these conditions and this, all of these, now, you've already attained your, uh, ability to create these slots at this size to this point, the undersized slots, how many there were and stuff, now, we're not, we're not fulfilling, we're not getting what we put out there.
What the, this completes, four more houses completes phase one in phase two?
No, ten more houses completes phase one, and then there's twenty more houses and lots in phase two that we're giving up.
Um, so, and that completes it right down to Center Street, phase one.
Yeah. There won't be any more roadway, uh, anymore, anything.
We're, I'm sorry, no, I'm just, we're good, I've been confused about the, the phases, I think we have two phases, first phase, did we change the last time maybe, first phase is the houses that you wanna complete, or second phase is the houses that we don't want.
Right.
So they're all the roadway that's filled, it's all that's ever.
That's right. I don't, the last time you were talking to me, you were pretty nasty.
But this is phase one, this is all phase one, and this is phase two. Okay, so. So at least this is.
What was the yellow now, what was the yellow?
This is what's completed.
Yellow is, has houses on it, they're built out.
Okay, so these aren't.
Right.
Yes, those are what are left to be built.
So where was that bond then, is that on, is probably.
That's, that's up here.
Okay, okay, I know, kinda like.
Right, James, what is that bond that's going up off of the entrance right over here?
That's a barn that belongs to, I believe his name is Sean, lives on.
Right.
Right on the harbor.
Right on the right.
And how'd he build that, with how?
How?
Do you got a, a building permit from you?
Yeah.
Didn't he need a building permit, uh, didn't he need a, uh, special permit from us?
Why?
It's bigger than, uh, uh, an accessory structure.
No, there's no limit on the size of accessory structure, you missed it all.
It's good enough frontage, right?
Long as it's frontage.
Yeah.
Good enough frontage.
Yeah.
Long as it's got the side.
As long as he meets the setbacks, there's no, there's no relief needed from this board for accessory structure.
He meets a setback?
Needs a setback on all, front, rear, sides, yeah, and we don't have a limitation on the size of accessory structure in town.
Let's see.
What about the wetlands, this is, this is something different, I don't even know.
Alright, I, I mean, I don't wanna get sidetracked, so what else do you wanna tell us about it? Just, you're working on it.
I didn't know what, I definitely know.
I'm just, uh.
Okay, so Monday night at, uh, five o'clock, the sewer department.
Yep.
Are you gonna go, I'm, I'll be there.
Uh, I'll, I think I've got a meeting Monday night, I, I think I've got something Monday night, I'm pretty sure we're about.
Because I'm only, uh, I'm meeting with Superintendent.
It's Canada's night.
Oh, seven o'clock, yeah.
Yeah, it's seven, yeah.
Uh, what, what time is this?
Five o'clock.
Uh, you, you, no one needs to be there for that.
Ooh.
This is, uh, the twentieth.
Yes.
Okay. Alright. So I'll be there, and I can, uh, listen to it firsthand, it's a formal meeting, right, that you're having with them, you're on their agenda?
Um, well, I presented, uh, something similar to this, um.
Something similar?
Well, back in August, I started talking to them about this, okay, and then they were, they wanted me, they wanted to know for sure that phase two wasn't gonna get built.
Yeah.
And they wanted, you know, taxes are all paid, and so now I'm ready to move forward, taxes is zero, we just paid about forty five thousand dollars. It was, we're.
So are you on the agenda, or is that more like the public input, like you can write out?
No, I'm definitely on the agenda to discuss the, and it's an application that I gave them, and, um, I'm not sure they're gonna act Monday night, I hope they take, I get a consensus, we're heading in the right direction, but, you know, it, it, it's just trying to take it one small step at a time, and if there's any, you know, roadblocks, let's try to resolve them before we jump into public hearings and public meetings and get consensus the best way to handle it, that's, that's my. I'm very hopeful that, if, when we finally have this public hearing, it's very like the one, the two you had tonight.
Hopefully.
Okay, that would be my goal, alright, if we could pull that off, it'd be fabulous.
Easy peasy.
Oh, they will.
Oh, okay.
Oh, it's a slam dunk, it's like.
Alright, I, I need to address the board for something, once we're done with this, man.
I'm gonna address the board too, but that's all.
Uh, let's just, uh, uh, approve minutes and then, um.
Why don't you give us?
I'll make, anything else, sir?
Okay.
That'll get coffee tonight, unless Jim has something, what's, uh.
You see that, you see the hard copy.
Um, yeah, we just gotta approve the minutes.
Has, has everybody seen the minutes?
I have.
Yes.
I wanna make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
All the data, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no opposed?
Stay with your eye, okay?
Thanks, guys. Good luck, bud.
Appreciate it.
I'll see you Monday night.
Okay.
What do they need?
What's that?
What do they need, here?
Mr. Ray.
I mean, right here on the, uh, right on their office?
Okay.
So, before Bob, uh, speaks, the.
Can I bring you a cup of coffee?
Uh, no. Thank you for asking that.
The Titan Historic Society that I'm a member of, so I'm gonna refuse myself from this hearing, but they wanna come before the board to eliminate the parking, uh, the driveway that we have on William Street. Uh, be, number one, because it's very dangerous for people to back out, it's one spot, I don't know if people have seen the new parking lot.
Yeah, yeah.
We're gonna park a lot now, so we're, uh, they're gonna come before the board.
I thought they're gonna pave it, no? They're gonna leave it crushed up?
I've heard too, I heard they're gonna do a bigger lot and pave it.
They've already done it, but they haven't paved, they put crushed asphalt, and they, they've gone rollers and it's, it looks very nice.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it looks nice.
We're gonna have two handicap spots there, giving it a number of parking spots, but anyway, uh, the building inspector, as well as the, um, Tom Ferry from the, uh, Titan Highway Department, has indicated to me that it feels very dangerous for people backing out, usually it's one of our senior members of the group, I'll include myself, senior. Uh, but, back out, it's very dan-, if anybody's ever standing on that corner, you see the car just going down the road.
That's obvious. Yep.
So we don't wanna, uh, Titan Historic Society doesn't wanna change its address, but wants to change, get rid of that parking spot. The, uh, parking lot will be the way you enter the property and the way you leave the property.
On Center Street?
On Center Street, but the address will stay the same, twelve seventeen, uh, question is, uh, I'm gonna refuse myself, the question is, can my wife, who's the president of the Titan Historic Society, go before the board, do you want the vice, uh, president or somebody else from that society?
I, uh, I'm trying to make sure it's, I think your wife will talk, I, to me, we always have the urge on the side of safety, and I don't have who presents it.
I'm a little bit afraid of that.
Yeah.
I'm kidding, I don't have a problem.
So watch the tape.
Wouldn't that be, uh, just, uh, wouldn't that be a planning board, though?
No.
No, it's gonna be us?
It's gonna be you.
Okay.
Yeah.
I need it.
It's gonna be to eliminate the, uh.
No, probably do.
No, actually, I would encourage it, I just don't have the authority to do it myself.
It's a corner lot, so you have, it's up to the person, whoever wants.
The only problem, the way our bylaw is written, you have to enter the property through its frontage, so if their address is on Williams, I can't grant them access on[1615.58]